Cape Charles Town Council regular meeting for June 16th, 2016. With my word, may I have the call call please?
I'm Charlie.
Mr. President.
I'm Brad.
We have a form.
I'm still here.
I'm still here. Thank you. I mean, we're going to say another. You got it? Uh, we have a form. Let us stand for the invocation. We'll have a moment of silence for the invocation and as we do that, please let us keep in our thoughts and prayers, victims of a terrorist act occurred recently in Orlando, Florida, and let us pray I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Before we start swearing in, John Lockwood, could you stand up please? Uh, Brad?
New public board floor. John, this seems probably like two months, but how long have you been on? Two weeks?
Three weeks. You've done a great job off to a great start, hit the ground running. Of course, this familiarity with town, it also a part of that. I think the guys are enjoying having John here. Definitely an asset to the town, so welcome John. Those who don't know him, I'm sure you will be happy to introduce himself and a good man to get to know. Thanks, John. John, just remember, I know where you live.
I know where you live.
Welcome over in town. My next order of business, Tracy Johnson, clerk of the court, will square in our new council members. So if you want them down there or can they stand in place, how do you want to do this? I think that would be nice.
Apparently they're on the front side. Hold on, this is Sullivan, Mr. Bottal, and Mr. Bennett.
Maybe first.
Stay right there. Stay right there. Put the rose in the middle.
Don't, don't. That happened more than already.
You raise your right hands. These are you, Sullivan, swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia and that you faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties and covenants on you as members of the town council for the town of Cape Charles for a term commencing July 1, 2016 and expiring June 30, 2020, according to the best of your abilities to help you out. I do. Congratulations. Good sign of your performance.
You got anything about this?
Yeah. One, my dear. Back in your saddle again. Hold on, hold on, yes. Get rid of my forehead.
Once again, democracy in action. I think this is wonderful and thank you all for the service that you will be giving in the future. I appreciate that very much and I'd like to leave the whole town with us. Thank you. Uh, next order of business, John Bertis, Mr. Bertis, there you are. You're going to be talking about crappy news and you're going to give us a joint IDA meeting.
Hi. Thank you for inviting me. Mayor, council, crappy news, just a short report. Everyone knows we had a...
Smoothie, might come to talk into the top.
Is that better?
Much better.
Okay. Uh, everyone knows we had a really bad Saturday and we were able to reconfigure the event, have it on Sunday. We had a bad day on Sunday as well, so, but a lot of hard work by a lot of people and a lot of support. We still made about $10,000, which is less than last year and less than our goal, we think. We had a good gig over at probably 20, that was our goal. So anyway, we had a good event and we've shown people that we can pull off a good event and rain a shine and we're there. Next year, I can't tell you the day off the top of my head, but it's third week in May for Saturday next year. We'll be back. And we got a lot of help from the town, but thank you for that, the town public courts and people. Uh, as to the IDA, uh, since I haven't been asked to report and I haven't thought about reporting for, I don't know, maybe ever, uh, if you think I say too much, say too long, give me the call, it's okay. But I'll try to give you a little rundown of what's going on, where we are, just some things to think about in industrial development in the county and the town. Uh, so I apologize for not being here. I will say if the mayor and the members of council would like to be on the mailing list for the minutes and the agendas and things that happen, I'm sure they'd be glad to include you in that. So that might be a good way to keep information coming your way, so if that's...
I do, I don't know what...
Okay, I'll wait to hear from the clerk. I'll be happy to ask him to do that. I think that'd be a good way to get you.
I'm honored.
Okay.
You said mailing list, you can access it on the John's website?
You can. I'm just saying, if you want to be, you know, regularly involved in the information disseminated to the members and the minutes, that kind of thing, you can get that when we get it at the same time. Meetings are monthly, generally at the Edmond Building in Eastville, they're open to the public. Recently, I think three times, we have met jointly with Akamak County's IDA. And the reason for that is, as you all know, it's a pretty small place, Eastern Shore, and we don't really feel we're competing and there's a lot of things we might work together on, so we're trying to do that as much as we can to promote the region. Excuse me. I want to say whatever I say to my, I'm not speaking for the IDA, I'm just one member. It is the Northampton County Industrial Development Authority and has incorporated town, which is Cape Charles and shared with Eastville and Exmoor and so on, so I'm just one member, part of this town. A couple of background things, it just, facts that kind of stunned me from time to time, I forget. You know, we know we're in an isolated place in Eastern Shore, we know that that's something we have to deal with. There has been recently an effort, and if you haven't seen this, it's something I'll send the link, it's also available at the A and P D C, some of you've seen it, website. And it's a study on what's going on in the economy now, where the strengths are, where the weaknesses are, that kind of thing. So I'm going to refer that a couple of times and I would encourage you to get this or I'll send the link and you can have it. A couple of things just to remember, Akamak County is almost three times the population of Northampton County. So we talk about the two counties and sometimes we forget that Akamak is almost twice the size geographically of Northampton County. So when we see that, there's going to be differences, there are differences in what's going on in their economy and what's going on here. The strengths of their economy are poultry, wallops, retail, commercial, the hospital, unfortunately, soon, agriculture, agriculture, tourism, shinkitits are big anchor to that. Northampton County, I mentioned poultry, this is something, I'm not pure lobbying for chickens, I'm not lobbying for chicken houses, I just want you to know, the total economic impact of poultry in Northampton County is $15 million. Anybody have an idea how much it is in Akamak County? 1.5 billion. Okay. I say that to say that causes a lot of things to happen that we're not going to have here. I mean, so we talk about wallop, things like that, there's a bit of a hash pay role in the chicken business up there, so it's just something we're not going to have. We do have some wallop commuters, like my neighbor, Jam, that will be having a retirement a few years. Uh, there is some retail commercial here, obviously in some of the towns like Cape Charles and some on 13, those say Exmoor. Uh, the hospital, unfortunately, as I mentioned, going to go some more away from us, we do have agriculture and agriculture here. We have tourism, Cape Charles is certainly a hub of that. And from what I understand, the home building right now is at its highest in 10 years, so that's certainly been through a while. Bright spots are the tourism and agriculture, agriculture here. People also complain that there's sometimes seasonal unemployment jobs, that's what we have. It's very hard to shift away from that. We do have retirees coming here, many whom bring good income. What they seem to be looking for are restaurants, entertainment, recreation, and healthcare, which again may intersect with that as a good end of the road. Uh, the community college, most of you probably know, maybe you don't, they've been working for quite a while to try to train the workforce, you know, which has been, I got on the IDA initially when they were dedicating the step part and the governor, Gilmore, to finish 17, 5, 16, I think, I'm not sure of his, he didn't do very well. He was giving a $300,000 check to a guy who had obtained here and part of it was, it was a building that will come to a theory that just doesn't work in economic development. People that choose sites for economic development look first to a trained and available workforce. That has been a chronic and still a problem in Northampton County, it's a hard thing to cure over time. The college is working to train people, but they're training them to some degree for the industries that are here, for tourism, for healthcare, for support industries, that kind of thing. You're not likely in Northampton County, certainly Cape Charles, to get some kind of factory of 20, 100 people or even 50 or 25, but they have lots of courses there. Uh, Dr. Glover is very involved in that and very anxious to work with economic development and could be the best they can if the college can make that happen. Uh, there has been, and probably still is, some tension between the IDA and the super managers, in part just because there's been a lack of consistency. Uh, you can say, well, you like what they've done or don't like what they've done, that's not what I'm here to talk about, but if you're talking to people needing economic development, they look for a couple of things. One, they look for consistent regimes, like this is what we do, this is what we like, they don't want it to change every time it's a political win, so that's also a lesson that we learn for a town, it's not just a county. And I think, I don't know, this is just my opinion, the Sunset Beach, which is undergoing a huge renovation, a lot of private mining, a big role that, uh, if that weren't there, I don't think that would be there in this current regime. Uh, I don't know that, I'm not giving any opinion about that, I haven't checked it. Steve's here, he probably does have to do that, but I don't know for sure. But I just say to say, if we want things to happen, and that's a big, big event here in this county, it will affect Cape Charles positively over time because there'll be people in the area, uh, it wouldn't be there probably if it wasn't already in place and it wouldn't be there because we wouldn't have some socialists and marchers and set away heads. Uh, our goal is to work with the assets we have and the regulations and the regimes that we have in various levels of the county and the towns, to do the best we can for economic development over time to bring jobs. But when you say that, there's often a long period of time between when you try to plan something, put it into effect, the jobs actually occur. So if people are standing around wanting jobs around the office, everybody knows that the jobs that are available are in tourism, and you can picture all the particular tourism and things that support tourists and agriculture. And even if we talk about things like agriculture, particularly farming, uh, they don't employ a whole lot of people, roughly speaking, especially farming, and they're high-tech jobs. So the idea now is to my background, I come from coal mining area in West Virginia. When I was a child, in West Virginia, there were probably four or 500,000 coal miners in West Virginia, and now there's less than 40,000 coal miners. And it's a combination of the industries climbing, it's mostly technology things, they don't do the pick and show. So the same is true in everything, so when you talk to workers, talk about workers, economic development is so common upon having trained and available workers, and I can't overemphasize that. The people that are coming here do have skills, but many of them are retired or retiring, but they have the opportunity to do away from homework, as I've done for years. The job ban certainly helped, but these are incremental, small pieces, they're not going to be the leaps I can't see, haven't seen, hasn't been there 18 years, someone coming in, employing a whole lot of people. It's not like, and I think it's not a reasonable goal, I think you just have to look at work, bits and pieces, we can help there. And that's been, and what I've tried to do for the town on the IDA for all these years, so. Questions?
Any questions coming in?
I'll be back again in 10, 10, no, 100 years. I'll come back when we ask. And I said, and what would be helpful, I'd be glad to, once you have a chance to look at some of this, right in the meantime, if you have any questions, you know, specifically address it for next time I come, it could be three months, if that's a pleasure, I'll be happy to talk to you.
What I, I don't know, whether three months is the right amount of number or not, what I'd like to do is to get you back here on a regular basis, but not, certainly not every month, but at some point, maybe three months, maybe every six months, just to see you progressing. So look, thank you very much for that presentation. I think many of these things, some of these things we assume you do already, this isn't training available workforce and that clause, companies is, you know, we need to do that, we need to do that.
Right, so educate, I mean, education at all levels, I mean, the elementary, the high school, and all that stuff, I mean, that's critical, and then of course, the ones that can go into college, you know, the strength. I have to mention too, there's a couple of other things that we know about, and this is small scale stuff, and it's big with individuals, uh, there's a program called Access, which simply guarantees kids that want to go to college or go to college. So that, if kids can, if they're motivated and we can keep them motivated, there are ways to get them to college. So poverty in itself is not necessarily the reason that kids can't go to college. I know it's a very imperative, I'm not, I'm not going to minimize that, but there are resources available, so what we need to do is encourage people to take that.
I do, thanks, John. Thanks, John. Next item of business, public comment.
Steven Fox.
You have three minutes. Wait, sure. You're all up.
Is red light the one?
No, the alarm goes off, and if you don't save, you're going to break weight drops out of the sky.
Well, it's nice of you to say that. I'm Steven Fox, I am a new resident of Cape Charles, but I have a long history of connection with the Eastern Shore and Cape Charles. I submitted written comments that you can look at later, essentially talking about the sand dunes built up in the town, and I can tell you at the outset that I'm neither an advocate for sand dunes or against sand dunes. I am more an advocate after attending the meeting of the board last evening, which the Corps made a presentation for the town's prudent management of the sand dunes. And I think it's a matter of whether or not the town adopts a policy of determining what a good baseline should be and adhering within reason to that baseline. And we all know the reasons that the dunes have grown to the size that they are, and the town has been a beneficiary, fortunately, of deposits of sand through the Corps project, and I don't know how much the town spent in 2007 and '08 for the importation of sand from one of the farms here, but the bottom line is, if they're unmanaged, you end up with the situation that we have now or worse. So I would encourage the council to engage in staff study or whatever kind of study is necessary to address the competing goals of the existence of the dunes, the protection issues, the land view issues, and come up with a policy of where those dunes should be over time from a profile and attempt to adhere to that. And yet again, I think if we can reach a consensus on it, it would be far better than letting it run up like it seems to have done. Those are my comments, and my written comments will be detailed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ed DeAngelo's?
It's three minutes. Uh, Mr. Mayor of Town Council, Ed DeAngelo, 609 Mason Avenue, Tax Bank Citizen, Cape Charles. I just want to read a brief note that this was written on January 28th, talking about structural conditions that appeared to me to be dangerous. And I wrote it to the code enforcement office, writing to you, writing to your office, bring to your attention to property located at 619 Mason Avenue, Cape Charles. My concern is the property appears to be in serious structural and dangerous condition and is posing as a potential problem to my residents at 609 Mason. I am requesting your office to inspect and evaluate this property, the property in question 619, prior to this, prior to total collapse and causing damage to my property, possibly bodily damage. I posed some pictures back then, and this happened to land on Mr. Brady's desk. I didn't hear anything, so on January 28th, 2016, I shot an email over there, I hand deliver to request for structural inspection and evaluation to property located 619 Mason Avenue. I would appreciate a response, written or email will do. And I received from Jeff Brady. On February 3rd, I did receive the information that you regarded below, I will be looking into your concerns. Well, today is what, June 16th? I haven't heard anything. And, you know, and I know people get busy and things get put in the back as a lifelong one in town, but, uh, I did about 30 years of my life in the military, and one thing that was stuck with me is I climbed that lotion ladder, was respect. And, and it's a two-way street, you've got to give it together. And I think the Cape, the taxpayers of Cape Charles deserve answers. I'm sure I'm not the only one, I'm sure it's happened before. And, uh, and you know, whether or not you're elected official or a paid official in this town, it would, it would probably belove you to keep that in mind. Thank you. That's all right. Thank you.
Bill Bucette?
Bill Bucette, 210 Tazewell Avenue. A couple of things, I know I have three minutes, so I try to be quick, but the first thing I'll talk about is the dredging in the beach. And I'm very grateful for the Wetlands Board for having a public information session last night because for months I've been asking what's going on with the, with the dredging and quite frankly, didn't get much answer, so I think last night I had a clear picture of what's happening and why the delay and with the project, and so my takeaway from last night was that the delay of the project is because of the back and forth between the town and the Corps of Engineers about the scope of the project, and I don't think the town communicated that very well at all. Um, so it affects tourism, it affects the residents, it affects business in town. And I was surprised last night to learn that, um, that the delay was really because of that back and forth and that the bottom line is that we're going to get 70% less sand up to the beach than was, uh, the original, uh, project design. And it, and there may be good reasons for that, but, um, I think the takeaway from that is the town needs to do a much better job of communicating to the residents and the citizens. And it's not good enough, I've heard the comment several times from members of the town council, past and present, that, you know, citizens don't come to the council meetings, so it's their fault that they don't know what's going on. Well, I come to town council meetings, I read the town council meeting minutes when I'm not here, how about I go to a town meeting and, uh, nowhere did I see the specificity of information that the Corps of Engineers delivered last night. So I think the town should do their job in communication, and I think as another citizen mentioned, uh, a few minutes ago, that it's past time that the town has a serious beach management program. The beach is a treasure of the town and really the reason that we have, and enjoy the tourism business that we do have. So I encourage the town to get with that and get a serious beach management program going. If I have any or so left, I also would like to mention on a more positive note, haven't?
Thirty.
Okay, the playground, the new playground is open for business. I want to thank the town public courts department for all the work they did, and also the police department, uh, members who contributed their volunteer time to help with that. And last, I just want to mention that the Citizens for Central Park summer concerts are kicking off this Saturday. I'm sure everybody's pretty much aware of those, I want to thank Jen Lewis for helping to promote those. The Navy Band is going to be here Saturday night at 7 o'clock, it's going to be fabulous, so we're glad to be able to provide that to residents and visitors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
George Ferguson.
Mr. Mayor of Town Council, I thank you for the privilege to be able to come here this evening, and thank you for the job that you all do too. I know you get a lot of criticism, but I know that the town council does a lot of good things for the town, I appreciate that. Steve referred to the meeting of the Wetlands and Coastal Dune Board last night, and I, you know, took in a lot of information. It's like anything else, you hear a lot of things and nothing factual, but we got some factual things last night. Uh, and one good thing, if you don't have a copy, I'll get you a copy, is the Wetlands and Coastal Dune Board has asked for public comments of how the sand dunes and things affect you, and there are five questions here that can be answered, and they're trying to get information from everybody that they can on that to make a presentation to the board, I'm sure, or to the town council. You know, we're blessed to have such a nice beach in this town. I grew up in this town, I moved back four years ago, but I can remember things the way they used to be, which I know you can't go back, it's all the time, you have to go forward, but I also know that we're not in the flood plain anymore. And it was brought up last night that the water has never crossed over the boardwalk. It came up in somebody's yard, and that was in 1933, George Savage's yard, he was five years old, and there wasn't even a boardwalk then. Now we have a boardwalk. So I, uh, it's a pet peeve of mine, you're going to be hearing more about it, I'm sure, about the sand dunes. Why do we need them? Uh, the tourists, everybody walks the boardwalk and they're looking, I guess, along to the parade, they come over the sand dune, uh, but, uh, where it's so high, and they look at the sand dune, and then they look over at our residents on the front and they see sand in everybody's yard. Uh, I think there needs to be more stress put on a sand management plan, and one thing I'd like to say, have you ever thought about putting sand fences down in the median in the road and put an L facing the water, that would collect it, and then when it, uh, contacts or sands contribute it there, have a management program to take that sand away. Um, anyway, and I've got some pictures I'd like to show you. I didn't know there's as many members sitting here, but if you would pass these out. And if you...
How you have 30 minutes, 30 seconds?
Yeah. I can't do much in 30 seconds now, I guess, you know. I'm trying to give you some constructive information, but if I can't do it, I can't do it.
Well, we'll...
You gotta look at it if you don't know what you're looking at. Uh, let me do say this one thing though, before you do that, you have a nice beach now, you're going to have to give me more than three seconds or whatever, that is formed on the south end, and if you look at that pictures, you'll see we're going to have a potential problem there.
First, I think I appreciate your understanding, and I will come and talk to you to understand this.
Somebody needs to before we have another drowning in this town.
I will come and talk to you about this.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
For three minutes.
Kim Holloway?
Look, folks, thank you again for all you do, we really do appreciate it. I'm going to comment a little bit, I was also at the Wetlands Board meeting last night, it was very helpful, um, and I'm with George in that more information is better, and I've noticed that the town is doing more and more of that through different communications about things, and I appreciate that. Um, my perspective is coming from a business perspective and the impact that the dredging will have on our tourist industry this summer. Um, because it has been delayed and the timing of starting possibly in the next two weeks, we're going to be right in the middle of our tourist season when the dredging is taking place with the large pipe going from the north end of the beach all the way down, is that my, is my understanding. Number one, from a safety perspective, I think that's really dangerous, but from a visitor's perspective, it's... But from a visitor's perspective, it's really reputation damaging. And that really will hurt us in the direction that we're moving forward, I think, as a town. The comments last night kept coming up, it's only going to be a week or two in the actual dredging, the actual sand part as far as the beach. And that's great. But as many of you know, some of our guests only stay two, three days or a week. That's their only impression. So we have to think about what that's going to be. So I encourage the town to, and I'd be glad to be involved, I'm not someone who comes forward with complaints without offering help. We need to get ahead of this from a proactive standpoint as far as signage, communication, making sure all these rental properties know what's happening. I learned a lot last night that I didn't know anything about. It's not a beach replenishment project. You know, we're really actually environmentally making, working with the Corps of doing this for those reasons. I could explain that to a guest, and they probably would understand it a lot differently. But I don't even know if I have the terminology to explain it, and I was here last night. So that's one thing that I think we should really look at. The other thing I'd like to talk a little bit about is the mosquito spraying timing and the flush timing. When you run a bed and breakfast, flushing and showering and brushing teeth is one of the basic services that people expect when they pay to stay with you. And when you have to tell guests that after nine o'clock, they can't do those things on the night that they're staying, and then this past one, have to tell them yet again the next night, it's kind of embarrassing. And I wonder if we might be able to look at doing that at 2:00 AM or even midnight. But really asking a guest that's paying to stay with you not to use those services is not a very good approach. And the other thing is mosquito spraying. I don't know if it can be done after dark. I have no idea with the process. But if that can be done at midnight, that would be super. And just one thank you, and that is on behalf of New Roots, we really appreciate the support of the town council and for the town of Cape Charles and helping us with the money. It helps a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, thank you all for your comments. We will listen to them. Appreciate them. We will discuss them as needed. Next order of business is approval of the agenda format and a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Next. All in favor?
Okay.
The format is approved. I need a motion to approve the minutes to the previous meeting. I'm just going to make a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? All in favor? Hear anything in the center of the table?
All right.
Okay. Next order approved. Let's go on to the treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report for May, page one. Total available cash on hand as of the end of the month was $1,722,462, which is an increase of $25,431 over April. Total restricted or reserved cash was $1,467,880. Total cash in all counts as of May 31st was $3,189,342. We have the next debt service payment is due July 20th. That's for the Manal Wayco 2006 bond, and that will be for just under $150,000. Page two. Current year fund balances and budget performance. General fund year-to-date revenue is $2.292 million. Year-to-date expenses are $2.008 million for a net balance of $284,000. Public utilities fund, year-to-date revenue of $1.62 million, year-to-date expenses of $1.3 million for a net balance of $316,000. Harper Fund has year-to-date revenue of $1.42 million and year-to-date expenses of $1.6 million for a net balance of negative $180,000. Breakwater Town Rate Match total of $110,000 is pending, and that will leave a net operations balances of negative $70,000 once that entry is made. All debt service payments have been made this year, and $107,900 on loss has been budgeted. Sanitation Fund has year-to-date revenue of $170,000, year-to-date expenses of $143,000 for a net balance of $27,000. Any questions?
Hold on.
Capital projects. Finance department dispersed $99,217 for capital expenditures in May, which yours follows. $6,622 for the playground construction. $8,776 for the Harper Breakwater. $315 for the Pine Street Waste Management Area. $387 for the Plum and Mason Pump Station Engineering. And $10,741 for sidewalk infill and $375 for weight finding signage. Page four. Tax collection statistics. We've collected ninety-eight percent of budget of property taxes by the end of May and a hundred and four percent of personal and business property tax budget. We are at sixty-one percent of the budget of prior year tax and penalty collections. Page five. Three-year revenue comparison. Mills tax revenue was fourteen percent higher than last year, and it was twenty percent higher in April. Transient occupancy tax revenue is thirty-five percent higher than year-to-date 2015. Local sales tax is still remaining twenty percent higher than 2015. People revenue is a little low as of close of May, however, we're still getting applications at a steady rate. A lot of people finally this year. Any questions?
Real estate taxes actually look like they're down.
They are.
What's going on? Do you know?
There's a large group of, they're pending a lawsuit that they haven't paid for this particular year.
Okay. Okay. Who's that group?
Question asked.
Okay. Can't discuss that.
Okay. Are you in groups?
I don't think so. I don't know.
We have all the students, not a matter of color for her. Talk to attorney.
All right. Folks, I'll take a question. I mean, is it county or town involved or are they two or have a town?
The county and the town.
Have a town.
Any questions I can answer?
Mr. Mayor, we'll talk to the attorney to find out when he brings us back to council. All right. The forum under which he can bring us back to council, whether it's an executive session or a possible. Anything else?
Can I ask one quick question? What is the property assessment?
I'm sorry, but we can't take a question after the call.
You can call the office, though.
Okay, thank you. Planning Department report. Oh, yes, 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 yes. Sorry. Need a motion to approve the treasurer's report. All in favor? All right. Treasurer's report approved.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, I want to bring your attention to the staff of Board of Zoning Appeals. Update from Board of Zoning Appeals Publicity in the meeting yesterday on the request for variance from off-street parking requirements. The Board of Zoning Appeals unanimously came for variance for that lot for a total of thirty-nine off-street parking spaces. What they did was they reduced the required open space to allow for two additional spaces. The plan that was presented showed thirty-seven spaces. So this was to accommodate two more off-street spaces. They also landed by way of commercial use, office space, retail and restaurant space up to eight hundred square feet at that facility in order to accommodate the parking. That's all they did. That was unanimously approved. That's the only update they have to my report. I could entertain any other questions.
Any questions? In what project?
This is the phase two of the Spur Rivers U Station on Hackett Hills property is the one that puts up against the Metro.
Thank you very much. Civil enforcement?
I have nothing to add. I have a question for you.
Any questions relative to the public enforcement report?
Just on the tap fees, Jim, based on total construction this year, ten and a half million last year, six and a half million of the tap fees are twenty thousand dollars less this year than last year.
That's because one of the big projects went on. The council allowed him to defer his connection fees until CEA. I would say that's a significant, good part of that right there. Thank you. Sure.
I have a question, gentlemen. House next door, is he going to get some relief by, from the town? Is there a reason why that had inspection had gone?
I have made an inspection. I need to make a more thorough one. It's not been on the top of my civil enforcement priority list. There's other properties that I've been working on more diligently, but I will get back on it and get back up with my standards.
I'm sure you appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
County Harber.
Mr. Mayor, Council. I have no further to report other than the bathhouse sewage and the amount of work that God had to hard put in that weekend. It happened on Friday just before the holiday. Just want to reiterate their effort to keep the building open for the weekend and the pump to be repaired. And it's due to the sand. That's something we're working on as far as happening with E1, the producer of the pump and our public.
These things always happen for a big weekend. I was going to ask, but I think you sort of answered the question. I remember this happened before a year or two ago. It was last year or a year before, and I'm wondering why that pump keeps failing because it's the same.
It was the gentleman that came, the day we called him, he came. He had a pump to Lenous until he repaired ours. It was the same gentleman, and it was the same. And they said it's coming through our drains. One of the things we're looking at during the Harber bathhouses on the outside, making an external shower, an outside shower, so people that are coming from the beach, or they have something to wash off, they can wash it off outside in an external shower. We were looking into the drain facility that would have, or if it would require a separate drain or how we could contain the sand. Might be something you have to clean up, but to do an external shower in the bathhouse.
Okay.
So we'll have to one day call.
Any questions? Thank you. Viper.
Hello. I just wanted to remind everybody that our summer reading program starts next Monday, and we're giving out these little bags to the first hundred children that sign up. This will have all our flyers in it and information about the library. And I also wanted to let you know that our program room is being repaired and sprayed. The pipes have been covered, extra bits have all done, and we're going to be all set for summer. So any questions?
Did they cut a patch in the road when they were working on some pipes in that area?
That was, that was when the bathrooms were not working. Everything, they'd backed up in the bathrooms and they had to cut a hole so they wouldn't get-
I'm assuming all that's been fixed.
Yes, it's been fixed.
Do they have timetable when you went to pass that?
I don't know anything about the road.
I think she's the wrong person to ask around. It's a good question. It's a relevant question. I will say, I've spoken with Mr. Paul. We have several other patches that also need attention, and he has been at it since this time.
That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief George?
Please. I don't have anything. Just, we've had some, one of my guys referred to it as not break-ins but go-ins in some cars, because they're leaving their doors unlocked. We've had six, two minor items taken. So just remind everybody to lock your car and help deter a little bit. We're patrolling extra at night, and I've come up a couple times last week at one o'clock in Wall Street, around two on the street. It seems to be the same people, I would say, that's doing it in the counties. Counties have probably a little more than doubled what we have, and that's at the same time frame, so.
Okay. So I guess the message to the public is please be sure to lock your cars, lock your doors. It's a simple thing to do.
It's a simple thing to do.
When, when you live in a place that seems to be as safe as this one, maybe in your bed, you think, you know, you're going to be home for only a few minutes, and it may not be necessary to do, but please lock your cars.
I mean, you want to follow your course, but you don't know who's coming here. Everybody knows the local people that live here. You don't know who's vacationing here. You don't know if they're criminals from another state. I mean, you don't know, you don't know these people. Just lock your car and help deter. We don't know everything else. Help us out. Help them out as best we can.
Okay.
I have a question. I know that there are lots of signs in downtown up and down thirteen that have put in your seatbelts out of your soul, and I noticed that we have at least two seatbelt signs. Are the police officers issuing signs for people who are not wearing seatbelts in both automotive vehicles and on golf carts? Or are they only doing it on the phones or the phone?
Well, seatbelt, all of the secondary violations, you can't stop. You can't stop the driving through. No seatbelt, that's a primary violation first. The ones that we had were, an officer stopped the car, and she was like, you gotta be this body cam footage, downloaded it, and she walks up to the car, and there's a two-year-old sitting behind the wheel of the car in dad's lap. So that's where your seatbelt violation is going.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Say you witnessed somebody go in a car or sit on a porch at night. Other than the 911, which seemed excessive, the sheriff's department has a number. Is that the route you want citizens to take, or is there another number that they?
I mean, we advertise that number, that's, we're not sitting in the office, so we're not going to answer the office.
No, but you know, implying I should call at the office.
But the dispatch office-
Direct calls from the officer.
The best thing we want, I want you to do is dial the sheriff's office number. That way it's a recorded line, goes through dispatch, and they dispatch my guy to wherever they're going. The deputies or whoever else is working here where they're going, and something jumps off bad, it turns bad, and my guy's screaming for help. If you make that direct call, the other officer don't know where they're going. And if they're coming to Cape Charles, they don't know where, so be like everything that 's with the sheriff's office.
And then that number of units is?
Six, seven, eight, nine, twelve. It's on all our business cards, it's on Facebook page, it's on website.
Jimmy, I understand from someone that if you really need to talk to a Cape Town police officer, you can call the sheriff's dispatch and ask to be connected to the police officer who is on duty.
Right.
And they will patch you through. Well, that's true. And that, will that conversation be recorded and told from beginning to end?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
If you don't want it, you can leave me a message in office, and I'll have to call you back.
No, no. I just want people to understand that number one, if they call the number, they really want to talk to a Cape Town police officer, they can ask dispatch to patch you through.
Right.
Because I don't think that's-
If you've got somebody going in a car, just tell the dispatch what's going on. Cause the fastest driver's start keying the mic, and we're hearing on radio. Just to have us call you. The mic take three, four minutes for us to call.
It might be helpful in the future for an article in the Gazette that addresses the different ways that one can get in touch with the Cape Charles police depending upon the nature of the communication and whether or not it's emergency.
Thank you, Senator.
If you're calling, please, it's time to learn, so let me on top of this.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. Public Utilities.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Paul, absent design, question matter, I just report starting utilities. Just want to point out, once we end it, we... Waste water numbers, first cost, first averages. At the front, a lot of discussions recently, or just the past month, show a point, point eight below a point three average. And our year-to-date average is a point zero seven five. So those numbers do look good. Nitrogen also is one point oh eight, the limit is four milligrams per year, and our year-to-date average is a one point one six. So we're starting to see some good numbers there. Still having issues with the mixers at the wastewater treatment plant. Had a discussion today this afternoon about providing us with more information regarding that. We're still having to put mixers out and have them repaired, so we need to get to the bottom. I think we still, at this point, we have, actually, one has, since the report went out, one has been put back in the lines, we have 12 out of 12 mixers operational, but we have five various other mixers, or other mixers in various stages of repair that we should be getting back shortly. But we need to determine what the issue is with these mixers, or why they're faulty, whether it's the sensor, the controls, or the mixers themselves. So we'll be investigating that and putting together information. This will be a case, if need be, we'll move to take this discussion up with the manufacturer. We need to have all our information together to present. I will attempt to answer your questions.
Oh, you, we still, we still using the same make, the same manufacturer?
Yes, sir.
Is there, you know, comparable makes and models in production in anywhere else?
There has to be. And that's one of the things we're going to look at is cost benefit analysis compared to the make, the cost of our existing mixer manufacturer compared to what it costs to replace the entire 12 mixers. Of course, there's no guarantee they will fall as well, but, you know, how many times do you continue to replace the same mixers? It's a beating your head against the wall.
My other question is, I guess, a lot of folks were, funds in, dismayed, learned that, I guess, the previous month attended, or this year attended, we should have bought 70,000 at the wastewater plant, but that's not, as I understood, it's not the only time in town, in the first two years. So I guess what I'm asking is, what are the, that was in year three, if I understood. What were the vast volumes for the first year and second year? So what, so we know, can ascertain the total amount of funds?
The grand total.
So you have a rough figure of the grand total of the fines that has incurred from the town to...
And then something else we'll be looking into as well, Tim, I don't know if you have a rough total.
I wouldn't want to try them, but they weren't 70,000 of that.
That was the highest, the seventh.
Yeah. One was four, the first one was four, and the second one, and they let us split the second one, how far, I want to see that was one thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
That's a good fifty, probably.
I'm sorry, I said it's over a hundred thousand.
So the total figures are a hundred?
Right.
So, I have a question, and is there anyone else had any questions about this? Okay, there were responses that issued throughout at the 421 council meeting, one of them was answered, I don't know who it was asked, I don't know if it was H. Steve, it asked about the use, or, but whoever it was asked it.
Not I.
Okay, so are you satisfied with the answer you got?
Yeah, I guess.
The second one was, help from Virginia Rural Water. Basically, what we're hearing is we're getting training here, but the specific question was help relative to the issues that we have with these mixers. So, so my understanding is that they have not yet returned our calls on this.
No, not roughly, not the other one, because I give that the treatment facility, it was not last week, it was the week before. So, I cannot get in touch with anybody, but they are apparently out in the field doing work, and maybe that's why I can't, I know they are greatly understaffed, we realize them in previous, my previous career, and their staff has been cut greatly, but they still provide a very important function to utilities around the state. It's just a matter of me making contact and I will get directly, meaning from Mr. Paul, I actually talked to him about this this afternoon, as far as reaching out to them, because I'm sending emails to contacts and those employees, and they will have to name and update their contact list. So I will get a phone number and talk directly with someone, and it's there, so.
So what is the name of the company, and where are they based?
Something like Virginia Rural Water.
Oh, I thought I had a band, the manufacturer of the mixers in continuously, in failure to the point the council threw, if you'd like, to take the calls with the mixers, we were offers of a hundred thousand dollars, but now it seems like we know where they live, you know, and know where they, you know, and then we would know that there's other companies that may want that business to have a better track record, and they won't return a call. How much longer will we continue to pay fines while we don't invite a show up, return calls, or investigate what would be a comfortable mixable, better track record substitute?
Yeah, I have not reached out to the actual mixer company, but an individual I've reached out to, in particular, Rural Water. I'd like to build our case before we reach out to the company, and so, sort of provide some supporting documentation as opposed to just saying, you know, we have a problem, we're going to explain to them what our problems are, and what our problems have been, and approach it in that manner.
You've got to expect a lot, but I like, these utility bills are commensurate, and they are powerful, many highs, pretty expensive operation, and they're not, not performing any better than they do. Okay, my other question had to do with the, we have this capital projects for water, the engineering for the tech wells, preliminary engineering for installation of cremation equipment. I, council has for plan in relation to water, we understand what's going on with cremation, because I talked for a while there, and we're not going to be doing that. We need to understand when we need to bring the tech wells online, criteria for that would be, and I believe that's been asked for from Mr. Paul before. If you could check the status of that, I'd appreciate it. I guess I'll jump in and comment there. Again, I understand the leg, and most of these presentations, because of the way the wells are currently laid out, they, the phrase upconing has been thrown around in regard to saltwater intrusion. So if you, if you like, you know, if you get that problem, that's going to make these hundred thousand dollar fines at the wastewater plant seem like small change if we don't manage the balance of withdrawal of water, if they're ever increasing withdrawal of water here in town, so that we minimalize and hopefully eliminate the risk of saltwater intrusion into our system. So again, these are really serious issues, and to sit around and wonder why we're not getting responses or reports from well-paid people that are supposed to be doing this, again, I think it behooves council and mayor to follow up strongly on all of these real important high price issues facing our community. All right, any other questions, any comments? Okay, Public Works. Once again, the report was submitted, but answering questions, council and mayor. Any questions from council? I have none, so let's go on Recreation. Any questions for Ms. Lewis? Okay.
I'll just ask the replicating, maybe it was mentioned previously, what time, what period is...
Actually, and that is my fault, and I apologize, that was what I should. We are going to push, push it back to the next concert possibly. Mr. Gilf and Kat and myself are going to get together Monday to make sure we get all the details.
When you're ready to have a talk and play?
Good playground, Kate, can it's playground? Yes.
When is the service coming?
I sent them an email, they must not have received it, so they said, you know, Monday, and I asked them for September the fifth, correct, which is actually later than that. They had a very short time frame, and we had other events, you know, that's dead. They will come in that morning very early, set up, they'll do two shows, and they will be out of town by 6:00 AM in the following morning.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, next item of business is the proposed budget appropriation fiscal year 2016-17.
As a result of numerous work sessions since March, and continued work from staff preparing the budget for FY16-17, as required by section fifteen point two dash two five oh three to go to Virginia, we see attached the results of all that work, which is a balanced budget for the four funds, general fund, harbor funds, sanitation, and water wastewater funds. There was a public hearing held as required on June 9th, 2016, and one citizen spoke. Any other questions? Staff recommends adoption of resolution two zero one six zero six one six, approving the budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017, and making appropriations for the fiscal year by roll call vote.
You have a motion? I move for adoption of resolution two zero one six, year six one six, approving the budget for fiscal year 2016-17, excuse me, and making appropriations for the fiscal year as noticed and forego reading of the resolution. I need a roll call vote for this, please.
Little yes.
Right, yes.
Ben, yes.
Ben, yes.
Natali, yes.
The motion is carried, thank you very much. Thank you, Benny. A lot of work for you and your team, nice job.
I'd like to say Livy helped an awful lot, she kept us on track, and kept feeding me times and schedules, we couldn't have done without her, that's for sure.
Livy, thank you very much too. We know you do a lot of hard work here, thanks. Next order of business is adoption of state law code forty-two dash three.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, this is consistent with what you do every June, I can say this is the second time, this is sort of bringing any changes from the General Assembly to this traffic to other kinds of sections, and all the law enforcement compliance, and it's necessary to do this for coordination of all state effects, you have a lot first, this year being 2016. So staff does request the adoption of the various ordinance, twenty sixteen, zero six sixteen, to adopt amendments to the Code of Virginia, section forty-six dash two, title sixteen one, chapter eleven, article nine, paragraph sixteen point one dash two seventy-eight and sequence, and title eighteen point two, chapter seven, article two, paragraphs eighteen point two, two dash two sixty-six, at sequence, if any, for incorporation into the Cape Charles Town Code, chapter forty-two, motor vehicles in traffic, as noticed and forego reading of the ordinance. You have a roll call?
Natali, yes.
Ben, yes.
Ben, yes.
Right, yes.
Little, yes.
The motion is carried, thank you very much. Next item of business is conditional use permit application.
Mr. Mayor, Council, please request a permit application for conditional use to operate Bed and Breakfast with a swimming pool at 5:30 Randolph Avenue was received by way of the R1 district, the Bed and Breakfast is a conditional use by way of our zoning ordinance, for the interest of the public who's here, they have to be familiar with the process. There were three things that are taken into consideration for the issuance of a conditional use permit. The first one is that it use not adverse, not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use, or adversely affect other land uses within a particular surrounding neighborhood. Second, that it not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood. And third, that it be, not be in conflict with the purpose of the comprehensive plan of the town. The next paragraph in my report just briefly addresses, from the comprehensive plan, the importance of seasonal and year-round visitors and the need to provide accommodation and housing for these folks. Section three dash D, economic vitality, with that section in the comprehensive plan specifically links the hospitality industry and the need for living accommodations as goals for the town's future growth and economic development. According to the R1 zoning district, the property, of which the property lot is in, the location is also requesting a swimming pool, which the lot, as you can see from the items presented, that is back up to the report, is large enough to accommodate, as well as an onsite parking. According to the zoning ordinance, the Bed and Breakfast would have to accommodate one parking space per room, per guest room, and then one parking space for the family who resides at the Bed and Breakfast, and those can be made up both on premises and on the street. So, the lot does show a parking, other photos do show a parking area on this lot, it's a large lot and a large house attached to it in 530 Randolph. Staff finds the application to be in order, however, before the applicant is allowed to operate a Bed and Breakfast with a swimming pool, all procedural steps need to be taken. So the staff is recommending that council set a public hearing for Monday, July 18, 2016, as a joint public hearing for planning commission. Planning commission entertain this application at the June reading and set the 18th of July as a public hearing for the planning commission.
May I have a motion to set public hearing for Monday, July 18, as a date for the joint public hearing, planning commission regarding conditional use permit? Is there any discussion? There being no discussion.
Sorry, what was the date you said?
July 18. July 18. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next item of business.
Is there any discussion?
There being no discussion.
Sorry, what was the date you said?
July 18. July 18. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next item of business. Official presenting amendment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, we stand, town, there's a lot of resignings, so I would read the majority of this to you, it's a very statutory in nature. Section two point seven point one and two point seven point two of the Cape Charles zoning ordinance outlines the zoning amendment process. Initiated zoning amendment, the operator must petition, the town council requesting an amendment, and the town council under pressure to petition to the planning commission for its recommendation. Excerpt of the Cape Charles zoning ordinance attached, which was part of your agenda package material, of the discussion, a letter was submitted by Cape Charles Jaxton requesting a zoning classification amendment for parcel eight three, eight three, eleven, parcel two, which is the twenty acre tract of land between Cape Charles Jaxton and Bay Shore Concrete Products from Harbor District to Industrial. Once referred to the planning commission, the commission will review the potential uses, and after holding a public hearing, forward the recommendation to the town council. Section two... Section two point seven point two B and C require public hearings to be held by both the Planning Commission and the town council. The public hearing can be a joint public hearing. Staff request the town council review of the letter from the Cape Charles Jot Center and referral of the request to the Planning Commission for the review and recommendation.
May I have a motion to review the letter from the Cape Charles Jot Center, revert the request to the Planning Commission for reviewing recommendation?
I'll make my amendment.
Second. All, excuse me, is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Thank you, motion is carried. We are now in the portion of the meeting where council can make comments. Or I can make comments too. Does anyone have any comments here?
I do.
Please.
I wanted to let the public, I wanted to remind the public that this Saturday, June eighteenth, is going to be a great concert in the park, starting at seven o'clock. It's going to be the U.S. Navy Fleet Forces Band. And also on June twenty-fifth, the following Saturday, the Mark Allen Lynch Band will be performing in the park, again, seven o'clock, and it's a great concert. There'll be one in July, the sixteenth of July, that is going to be, I believe, before the council meeting. So I want to advise you of that one. And that'll be helping along, and the Ministers of Soul, and they do, who moves. So I hope that you all can come and join us. Bring a picnic, bring a blanket, bring peach chairs, whatever, prefer the weather. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like, excuse me, first to thank Frank, and in absentia of town, for your services of the past four years in the county. We haven't always seen, I think, we had some good, healthy discussions and we're supposed to. And that's a lot of good things, so thank you very much, Frank. I'd also like to talk a little bit about dredging from my perspective, and I'll make that clear. I spent a lot of time working this issue for a number of reasons. And a number of statements were made tonight that I don't think are actually correct. And Mr. Fox, I think, who has left, I think, in fact, the Wetlands and Doom Board is already doing what he is suggesting that we do. And that was part of the thing that was mentioned last night that they need to do is to manage this doom, these dunes. But the delay due to the town and the Corps discussing is not in fact true. The delay that has caused the project to be awarded at the time it is being awarded is due to the Corps' extension of the first two phases of the project. This is phase three of the three-phase project. This is typically not dredge season. Dredge season is normally in the winter months. So this is very unusual, and it's not due to the town. I think there's been a dearth of information from the Corps, at least that I've received. And when I did receive the information, I was concerned about what they were doing. The original design showed a total place in Long Town Beach of ninety-three thousand cubic yards. In 2015, they placed somewhere between seventy thousand and ninety-eight thousand, depending on who you talk to and what day it is, but somewhere in that range. So they placed almost as much as they were supposed to. When they finished dredging, the upland site now has a remaining capacity of a hundred thousand cubic yards. Remaining material to be dredged totals two hundred thousand cubic yards. So they had to find a place to put a hundred thousand cubic yards, and the town beach was where they chose to put it. I never saw anything that showed the placement of the additional hundred thousand cubic yards, but I did hear a lot of complaints and witnessed a lot of blowing sand over this past winter. So I had a lot of concern about placing another hundred thousand yards on that beach. So I see the dunes as one issue, I see the sand blowing off the wider beach as a bigger issue. And I think that's something that we need to continue to address. A suggestion at a work session was that we go back to what they originally suggested and only put ninety-three thousand cubic yards on the beach, rounded that up. So at the time, we were working with a number of seventy thousand that we thought they put on, so suggested that they could put another thirty thousand on, and then they could take the other hundred and thirty thousand and perhaps put it on the Bay Creek Beach, which needs sand definitely. There were reasons they said they couldn't do that, lots of them, some were discussed last night, primarily, I think, environmental permitting. What they did do, being the town said we didn't think we needed another hundred thousand cubic yards, in order to get them to consider that request, we had to go, not only, they didn't listen to us, we went to Leonard Lewis, he had a meeting with the Corps, went to Scott Bridgell, he had a phone conversation with the Corps and a meeting with the Corps, to get them to agree to at least listen to us. So they did listen to us, that's what they came with last night, was the thirty thousand cubic yard proposal. Because there's only a hundred thousand cubic yard capacity left in the upland site, they've done some numbers and decided they can maybe squeeze a hundred and eighteen in there. They're short seventy thousand cubic yards, maybe sixty thousand cubic yards, so to compensate for that, they're going to narrow the channel from three hundred feet to two hundred feet for a length that they mentioned last night, that doesn't come to me. But throughout this process, from my perspective as a councilman, and I find out otherwise, I'll be more upset, I thought the correspondence between us and the Corps of Engineers was poor. I never saw a drawing that showed anything that they were going to do. I thought they brought drawings last night of what they intended to do. I was told this morning that they brought drawings of the original proposal. So a lot of misinformation, I think, you know, it's good that we got a hundred thousand yards of sand, it's good that we're going to try to manage that sand. Sand blown over the jetty, I think, is going to be their problem because it's filling in their dredged harbor. And it also creates, I think, an even more dangerous condition than pushing the beach out, whereas we did. So that's my five minutes, I wanted that on the record, so thank you very much for that. Again, Frank, thank you for your service.
All right, I have a few comments, but.
Greg, everyone. What is with the Zika season coming up? That the town, we're looking to do something about Zika and informing the citizens. I've heard that Dr. Parkman has a very good website on the Zika, that Libby. So it's coming, so be ready. As I look around the room, there's no danger of any small children being born, okay? Anytime soon. Also, I ask council, maybe have a little actor of consideration to cut the grass at the museum. I mean, they are the unassuming welcoming center of the town, so I, I think it's a very good thing that, for my business, it helps. And also with the farmers market, which seems to be becoming very, very popular. So bad law work can just sort of scoot over from Murmurs Garden and cut their, their lot, I appreciate it, but that's purely up to council and the plans of the people who set up here, outgoing and incoming.
Thank you.
That's it.
Ms. Natali? The only thing I would like to say, well, first of all, I've got a couple things to do. First of all, Steve, I appreciate your going through what you went through. I had intended to do that myself, I think you did a far better job than I would have. I think you're more knowledgeable in this than I am. I think it's a fair representation of what happened. The delays that happened were due to delays almost entirely on the part of the Army of Engineers. So I think you got some information out there, so I appreciate that. The other thing that I, I'm so sorry, the other thing I need to do. Mr. Wendell.
First time, Frank.
First time, everybody. Frank, thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
He's a little present from the town. We all appreciate you. We don't always agree with you, but you will always add it. And thank you very much, and we should best of luck, and we'll obviously be seeing you around town.
Thank you very much.
So if you want to say a few words?
I've been from a lot of places and traveled a lot of places, but generally got one hometown. And Cape Charles is my hometown, and I always try to bring that spirit, whether it is, whether it is agreeing with somebody or not. I like seeing the town make smart business decisions and, um, knowing to take people in my family and my family company to task, and I feel like that wasn't the case there, and I brought that here to the council. And I appreciate everybody putting up with me, and thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Now, Mr. Godwin is not here. Even though he is not here, I want everyone to know how much I have appreciated his presence on council and his service, and the wisdom that he supplies. And so if you see him in the street, thank him, he's done an outstanding job as well, and he won't be missed. And we, again, we appreciate what he did very much as well. So we can clap for him in absentia of the town. All right, there's some announcements, June twenty-eighth, from six to seven are my office hours. Town Council, July fourth, town offices are closed for the holiday. And also, of course, there will be the July Fourth celebration and fireworks. On July seventh, there is a town council work session at six P.M. that is tentative. I have office hour July twelfth, in two to three. July twenty-first is the, first is the July town council regular meeting with our new council members and our returning council member. And then I have the mayor's office hours again from six to seven. Is there any date here that I have left off? We need to, I think we've covered a little.
Just mentioned the Main Street program, next Wednesday evening. I set out a weekly report, and I think I stated at six P.M. start time is actually six thirty, which is called my attention. And I will be here at the Civic Center, and we will have a guest, the former coordinator who lived across the hall from me, Woodstock, she ran a program, her position here. And what we hope to accomplish is, the state has sort of provided us a macro look at the Main Street program, and we're looking to Jane, the lady's name, we're looking to Jane get more into the micro. She started the program, Woodstock, she's been, been through what we're about to go through, and I think it'd be very valuable to hear some of the lessons learned. Executive Director of the program. That will be six thirty, next Wednesday day here at the Civic Center.
I think it would be appropriate to remind people that the Main Street program can not provide, in my opinion, and in a number of other people's opinion, if it is only the business people who constitute that organization. The residents of this town need to be as active in the Main Street program as the businesses and the business owners. So please take that under consideration and try to help.
Thank you, Brett, thank you, Joe. I think we're finished, and may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to.
All in favor?